Do you want me to switch spots with you?
Well, I think we'll first have a hospital.
Good, okay. You guys ready? Okay, today is Tuesday, November fourteenth, study session. Public comments on study session related items. Public comments on the study session items? No?
I have a comment in general.
Okay, you gotta wait till the end then. Okay. Discussion on the Munson Healthcare from Kelly Tomaszewski, President of Manistee Hospital.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight on opening day eve. I will try and keep it short so y'all can get ready for tomorrow. Just thought this was gonna be a wonderful opportunity. There's been a lot in the news and I think a lot of chatter going on within Munson Healthcare about what our redesigned transformation plan looks like. So I'll share at the end of my presentation, but I'm, I think it's really important that I'm out talking to groups and so questions can be answered. We can share information. You know, you read an article in the paper and you have an opinion on one way or the other, not sure. You don't really have an opportunity to answer questions, get clarification, and so I just think it's really important that I'm here today. I wanna hear what you have to say, so I guess we'll just do questions as we roll through this. But if you do have anything or you need clarification, or just have input, just let me know. I am the President at Munson Health in Manistee Hospital and also Paul Oliver Memorial Hospital that is up in Frankfurt. So as we've talked about, there's been a lot of news about what that change looks like, and I think we all know that healthcare has changed a lot in the last few years. We don't talk about the pandemic every day anymore, but it is something that has impacted what we do and how we do it. We know that the workforce has been really severely impacted by the pandemic and, you know, people in healthcare have always worked hard. It's always been a very rewarding but a very hard career. And I think with the pandemic and all of the challenges that happened, we across the nation saw people leave healthcare. Either they were close to retirement or just thought they wanted to try a second career and just get out of it altogether. So that's something that we have seen really across the country. And that's no different here in Manistee on a much smaller scale, but it's difficult. And so, you know, recruiting and retention are a big focus on what we want to do and continue to do at Munson Healthcare. A lot of our employees in Manistee were born and raised here. They went to school here at West Shore Community College and they still are here, so they're our most available resource and we wanna make sure that we retain them and give them a work environment that's gonna be attractive to them. So that gave us an opportunity as very large systems throughout our country were really struggling financially with increased expenses in healthcare, more than I've ever seen before, pharmaceuticals as well, even having lack of supply and access to supplies. So it just really increased our challenges in healthcare, but it's always our job to take care of our community and our patients and our staff, so that's something we continue to do and is always a focus. But as we looked at how we deliver care in Northern Michigan, and we're really kinda from middle of the mitten up, we are the, we are the majority of what take care of our patients in Northern Michigan, so that's really important to us and we take that very seriously. So that's the whole why behind why we felt as though as a system we needed to redesign healthcare. And there are some key messages that went into the thought behind that. The first is that we wanna be patient centric. We are patient centric. Everything we do is focused on our patient. What we recognize as we look at healthcare and the changes that have happened since the pandemic, it's now more important than ever that we have enough primary care providers, so that's your family doctor, your family medicine person, or the person you see on an annual basis to make sure that you're healthy. Because this is gonna sound a little off, but it is, our number one focus is to keep you out of the hospital. We are a hospital and if you're sick enough to be in the hospital, we wanna care for you, but it's really more important that we're way ahead of the curve on that and we make sure that you're in for your annual exams. If you have an issue that comes up, you can get in to see your primary care provider. That's the person you develop your relationship with. They get to know you, your health, they know about your family, they know what's important to you, and that just really increases the value of that healthcare. So we wanna make sure that we increase the access of that. I'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about how we're doing that in Manistee, and also navigation within the healthcare system. It's complicated. It's not always easy. You know, you get a lab ordered, you wanna get, make sure you get in. We wanna make sure you can get that timely. Those results get back to your provider, so if there's something that's off, we can make sure that we help, they, they can help work with you whether you need a different therapy or something. So really quality and navigation are really the things that we really pulled out of that, really looking at how we care for the patient and making it more easy to, easier to maneuver but also more timely. We wanted to also expand our outpatient footprint. We talk about our hospital and what we do, but there are so many services that we provide here in Manistee and really on all of our campuses within Munson Healthcare that are an outpatient basis, meaning you don't stay overnight in the hospital. It might be surprising for those here to know that eighty-five percent of what we do here in Manistee is outpatient. When you think about lab, radiology, all the therapy services, P T O T speech, walk-in clinic that we now have changed over to the same daycare clinic, so you don't have to wait for an appointment. You can call and get an appointment and you don't have to wait hours in the lobby. We opened up Manistee Wellness south of town. We closed that during COVID, so there's another option. If you live south of town, you don't have to cross, go around the detour for the bridge. So we're really looking at how we can continue to offer outpatient services, because that really is already a very large majority of the services that we provide here in Manistee. If you are sick enough or you need to be in the hospital, we're there to take care of you too, but it's really a small percentage. One thing that came from the pandemic that actually was positive is we learned that virtual care is something that we were a little behind on in Northern Michigan. You know, there are a lot of things we can do on our phones now and virtual urgent care and just virtual care in general is one of those things. It's a learning curve. It took us a little bit to catch up, but really escalated that faster. I don't think with, if we hadn't had the pandemic, I'm not sure we would be there now, but we, we offer services that are virtual. So it's really about not only making things more accessible if you come on campus for us, but also us meeting the patient where you live. So you can be at home with your phone and if you need to do a virtual visit, you can, you don't need an app even, you just go ahead and click on, you call the number for Ask a Nurse, they'll hook you up with the virtual urgent care person, they'll take care of it. I had an eye infection over the pandemic and I couldn't get in because that was when we weren't seeing visits. I used it. They were able to diagnose my eye. I got antibiotics, got to pick them up at Meyer, and I was good to go and it took, you know, an hour versus maybe a couple of days to get in. So that is something that we really escalated with virtue, virtual care. That's really been a pickup for us. And then really looking at what services of those patients that do have to come into the hospital, where do we provide those services? Do we continue to provide them at every hospital? That's something that was, we've heard in the community, people thought we were closing inpatient services. I'll get to that in a bit, but we're not. So I'm looking at where we provide those services and how many beds we have for each place. And really all of this is to really make sure that we're giving the right care in the right places and then really having Munson Medical Center be our tertiary care center for the system. Meaning if you're sick, you're having a stroke, you're having a heart attack, we know those patients already go north for that. But there are other things as well that, you know, we want, if there's some things we sent to U of M or to Detroit or to Grand Rapids, that's a hardship for a lot of people to get down to see their loved ones, to make sure that they're down to their support, their care. So as a system, we recognize that's really important for us to continue to have offerings there and make sure that we can have that service in Northern Michigan rather than having to travel. So when I talked about the hospitals, so this is, I'm gonna try my pointers at the little sunshiny thing. Look at that. So this is kind of a map of Northern Michigan and the big H's. We all know Manistee has a hospital and that's what we identify with, but we also have all these other outpatient services that are part of the service that we provide to our community. And through this, we've really identified three different regions within Munson Healthcare. I'll start with Traverse City up here. That's Munson Medical Center. And then we have the east region over here, which is Atsego, Charlevoix, and Grayling. And then we're in the south region, Manistee, Cadillac, and Paul Oliver is right here. So that's, when we think about the south region and we think about where services are provided, we're really gonna be talking about in a little bit about us trying to keep as much here in the south region as possible, because it's, you know, more convenient if you don't have to go to Traverse City, if you don't have to go somewhere else. And that's one thing that we learned and we really refined in a quick amount of time too, is really those inter-regional transfers rather than always going to the Traverse City market, which is great, but they couldn't house everybody either. So we needed to really learn how we could coordinate those transfers within the, within the south region or the east region if needed, and we've seen really good pickup with that. Takes coordination of care. Providers need to get to know each other. We weren't always used to sending patients over to Cadillac or from Paul Oliver to Manistee, which we do frequently, because they have a small, small, small inpatient unit. So just us really working more as a system, I think, to coordinate that care for our patients that they need. So that was a picture of the H's, and this is what the future state of healthcare looks like and really the whole goal of our regional, regional design transformation. So if you think about the map that we just looked at, there were H's in all of these places and that's kind of that, this little icon right here. But when you look at the other things that we offer, as an example, in Manistee, we're more specialized care, so having specialists that come on campus for THB, our Travers Heart and Vascular, they're onsite frequently, so you don't have to go and travel to receive that specialized care and consult, which is great. Now, if you had to be inpatient for that, of course you'd go to Traverse City, but if you're doing a checkup or you're, you're doing a workup to see if you have issues, you can do that right here. We have nephrology and other specialists that are right here in Manistee that come on a regular basis that we can refer you to, so you don't have to go far. Primary care, again, is one of those areas of growth for us in Manistee. We had some retirements and things, and again, that's that access that we wanna make sure that you have so you can get in and stay healthy. We have only one opening right now and it's for a physician that we're recruiting for, but we filled like four of our positions with either physicians or nurse practitioners, so that's really a pickup for us. So again, it cuts down on that wait time where you need to get in. We wanna get you in sooner than later so we can keep you as healthy as possible. One thing that we talked about, haven't talked about yet, is that, so in the plan, and we'll see it on the next slide, but we also wanted to look at community hospital versus a regional hospital, and I talked about a tertiary care hospital that's up in Traverse City. But each the south and, the south region and the east region are each going to have what we call a regional healthcare hospital, which for us in the south is gonna be Cadillac. It's bigger. They have a true ICU where we have kind of a step-down unit in Manistee right now, so we can take care of our sicker patients and ventilated patients and that kinda thing, but we really only have three beds like that, where Cadillac has many more. So we're talking about what that will look like. We'll talk about that. And Atsego is gonna be the regional hospital in the east region, and then Grayling and Charlevoix would both be community hospitals. So this is a picture, a graphic of what that looks like, and so central region would be that tertiary care center in Traverse City, and then Cadillac would be our regional hospital with Paul Oliver in Manistee being that community hospital. Where we would, you know, increase our primary care, virtual care, and home care settings, increase those visits, but also continue to provide the services that we do now, and Atsego has a similar model. This transformation, some of it has occurred and, but most of it hasn't. It's really a three-year plan, so from one to three years, it's gonna take time for us to really coordinate services and resources and staff and do the things that we need to do. Planning staff would all stay where they're at, but if for some reason they wanted to move within the system, we would support that. But it's gonna take time for us to really get to the point where we're truly integrated, but that doesn't come fast, and that's good, because we wanna make sure that we're thoughtful and do it in the right timing.
Would you define tertiary hospital for me?
Yeah, it's a higher acuity hospital, so it's where the sicker patients go. They have usually like interventional cardiology, so if you need a heart cath, that's, that would be done in Traverse City. If you have true ICU where you're, you're really sick, we can take care of you if you're moderately sick here at a community hospital, but if you need more resources, more things that are available, more treatments, that you would go to that tertiary care center. Kinda think about Butterworth and think about U of M, the bigger hospitals, that's where you would go for that care, and then that will be our, our location in, at Munson.
Thank you.
Question? Yep, I did. So when we think about current state where we are, there are gonna be some change. I'm still sorry to be like this to all of you. I don't, can't figure out how to be over like this and do it that way, so I'm sorry. But so we're looking at, we know that, what we just talked about, that full integration is gonna take one to three years for that. There are some things that we are gonna be doing a little sooner than that, and surgery after hours is one of those things. So currently, right now, we have call coverage during the week from seven PM to seven AM, Monday through Friday, and then on the weekends, we have twenty-four hour coverage. We did a deep dive into looking at what our volumes looked at, not only last calendar and fiscal year, but also many years before that. Last year, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year, so July through June, we did three thousand six hundred and thirty-six surgeries, so three six three six. One point two percent of those were actually done after hours. We had fourteen cases during the week between seven PM and seven AM. And we had call teams on, during that time, were really lightly utilized as you can see. So we really started to think about, you know, as we look at our resources and what we have available, looking at the type of cases that were done, yes, there are some things that are true emergencies and some of those need, we don't keep in Manistee anyway, like if it's heart or vascular or stroke, whatever. There are some things that have to be done right away and there's some things that can wait until morning. And so when we looked at those fourteen cases, there were some that likely could have waited, but we had a call team available and people were willing, of course, always to come in and do that. But when we look at that fourteen cases, it's a small number compared to the overall. When we look at the weekend, however, there were more cases. We had forty-two cases over the weekend and that's twenty-four, that's seven AM till seven the next morning. But we really looked at those cases as well, and so after a lot of consideration, deliberation, looking at the data, talking to our providers, et cetera, starting January first, our plan right now is to look at that call coverage during the week. So from seven PM to seven AM, Monday through Friday, not having call during that time. What we're going to do is currently, we would have a call, we would have our normal staff would come in from seven AM to three thirty PM in the afternoon, and then they'd be on call from that time till the next morning. What we're looking at now, because we looked at when lots of those cases were done kind of over the years, a lot of them are, some of them are done, not all of them, but some of them are done between that three thirty and seven PM, because that's when the ER is ramping up, that's when things come in and we, we need to take care of it in a timely fashion. And again, some of those cases, we can, we want to get you admitted to the floor, comfort care, we wanna make sure you have pain management, whatever the issue is, and then sometimes even if it's an orthopedic problem, we want the swelling to go down overnight so we can, you know, do your case the next morning. So we are going to January first be offering services seven AM to seven PM during the week with call from that three to seven. And if the call team needs to stay and finish cases or whatever, add them on, that's fine, but we wouldn't have that coverage seven P to seven A during the week. And then because we had a larger group of cases that we did on the weekend, we, we're not gonna eliminate call on the weekend completely at all, but we're looking at having seven to three thirty Saturdays and Sundays. So if there are things that have come in overnight, we can take care of them in the morning. Sometimes there are things that can wait till Monday, but then we have other surgeries that are on Monday and then you're bumping cases and all that, so we wanna have that ability to be able to do those cases weekend, and surgeons are very happy with this plan. They're supportive of it. But again, we're gonna look at it for a quarter and see how things go. This is, I think the week call will probably stay the same. I'm not sure about the weekend call.
Just, just the local hospital status?
Just for Manistee. You bet.
Someone comes in, they need surgery, you're gonna just ship them north?
You would stabilize, or they would go to Cadillac?
You're on call, you're gonna ship them out?
Yep. Great question. And what we're looking at and finalizing details on is having regional call with our surgeons too, so they're familiar with their patients here. They could go to Cadillac. And that's something that we've done already in one of the specialties, and we're gonna probably expand that. We've already done it with orthopedics. It's been seamless. It's worked really well. And so we're gonna be doing that likely with general surgery as well, where we're finalizing those details. So we're still gonna have coverage. I've heard in the community, I was just at the Senior Center last week and I'm at the grocery store and I've heard, I'm so sorry, you're not gonna be doing surgeries in Manistee. That's quite the opposite. We're gonna continue. That's an area of growth for us, and we wanna make sure that we can do as many surgeries as possible in Manistee, so.
Surgery includes, I mean, what, the definition of surgery is what, cutting somebody open or what?
Yeah, so it's anything that we would do in that surgical area, not only in an OR but a procedure room, which is a technicality. Orthopedics, general surgery, GYN, ENT, so ear, nose, throat. We do podiatry, we do dental, really for most of the state, from middle of the mitten up, we do most of those cases there. Scopes, so upper GI, your colonoscopies, we do all of that in our ORs.
It's all considered surgery?
Mm-hmm. Yep, it's all surgery, and we have every intention of growing that area. Dr. DeAngelo is back, as most of you know, and he is busy, 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 and we're happy about that, and he's happy to be back in Manistee. So you know, there's always opportunity for us to continue to grow and we are very happy to do that. So when you think about, there would likely be some more transfers than we have, because if we have somebody that has to be seen and has to have surgery that night and we don't have call, this is something that we, we've talked about EMS support with MMR and we have city support as well. And so Bill, thank you, called me about three weeks ago and said there was a meeting. I was actually out of town. I was at that meeting, but there was a, a meeting with kind of MMR support and city support and Dr. McCombe and other leaders from Manistee, and they were talking about what this may look like. And there was, you know, some opportunity for us to kind of talk through those details a little bit further, so I thought it was, it was certainly a very important thing to do that conversation. So we met, I think, the next week and everybody listed was on that. Bill, thank you for being there as well. But we really were able to get all the team together that are involved in transfers, including the ED manager and others that really can, we can really talk about what transfers look like within the system and what would be our plan if we had to increase transfers a couple of more a day. That's a scarce resource and we know that, and I know that is, that's throughout the state, throughout the country, so that we wanted to make sure that we have plans in place and communication and relationship between all parties involved, so we can make sure that we're looking at transfers kind of post-fac, but as things are happening real time too, so we can make sure if patients need to go somewhere, they get there timely and it's important. One thing that we did talk about is that there is a medic class. That's something that's been a little hard to recruit for, I think, to get medics. We, we hosted, the hospital hosted a class last year and I think we graduated five or seven and they all stayed in Manistee. They're actually gonna be offering another class this spring and they already want a bigger room, so I don't know how many, but we'll take as many as we can. I did hear at a different meeting that there is some grant funding available for students that want to go into this, because it is such a hardship for so many people. So, boy, if I have to host a class every, every quarter, I'll be happy to do it. It's just space and we're happy to have them there, so we feel good about that. MMR is also talking about having a standalone transport van that would actually be parked in the Manistee parking lot. It would help, they're looking at like a twelve-hour shift to cover like a day's first. It is gonna be an incentivized staffed shift, so the worker, medics and param, they all work so many hours already, but there's a lot of interest even from folks from Traverse City to come down and support that because it's incentivized. I don't have a timeline on that, and I think we're gonna be meeting in a couple of weeks and hopefully we'll have a little bit more information about that, but lots of creative thing, I think, thoughts have gone into how can we make sure that that resource is available.
So you're not gonna be taking our city van out to Traverse?
That's what we talked about, that communication. We wanna, as much as possible, we wanna leave that here in the city.
Well, I, I'll tell you my point right out, and I've discussed this before. I will agree to five miles out. I'll vote against anything else for that.
Yeah, and, and we don't wanna do, we wanna, we wanna leave that, that rig here, so they have that support, and that's why we, it's important that we're all together. We're gonna be looking, if there are situations where that is a situation where we have to use it, we wanna talk about what happened and how can we make that better next time. I think just having that group together on a regular basis is gonna be really helpful.
But the, yeah, the increased burden on MMR would be an increased burden on us, but we're gonna be monitoring that and meeting regularly, I think, in the next couple of months, so.
And it'll be ongoing. I think it needs to be, especially, it is, some of these plans are one to three years, so it's gonna be something we have to continue to talk about. The other thing, I don't know if this group is aware of this as well, but starting in February of this last calendar year, Munson Healthcare proper opened up the transfer center to all hospitals within the Munson Healthcare system. Used to be if you were in the ER, the ER doc would call up to Traverse City and say, I have a patient that I think needs to be transferred. They would work with a specialist. It was multiple, multiple, multiple calls. Took sometimes hours to get the right care, accepting provider, because it took a while to get to them, and then you have to get transportation somewhere, and that, that's been, that's been a challenge for a long time. Manistee was, went online and I think we were one of the last to go in February, where it is now a one-number call, so either a nurse in the ED or a provider in the ED can call the transfer center up at Traverse City and say, we have a patient that's gonna need X specialist or needs to be transferred. They immediately start working on that transfer. It's a call, and then they work behind the scenes. They have a team twenty-four seven that does this. They have what's called, I call it a war room, because it's a room like this with screens all over. They can not only see what beds are available at the medical center, but they can see what beds are available in Manistee. They can, staffed beds, they can see that, and it's automatically updated. They can also see where all of the ambulances are within Northern Michigan. So if they're in Traverse City, if they're in, some in Calva, there's one in Norman, if there's somebody available, and based on how they triage that patient, if it's emergent, they can start sending that ride to Manistee right away, so we're not delayed. That's been a huge change and a huge impact for us. Yes, we still have delays. Things happen, but we, that's been a really big pickup, and I think we get such great data from them too, so we're gonna be able to look at that when we're all meeting together and see what have been some issues to continue that conversation. So I, we have a lot of things that are moving in the right direction, I think, in this area. So if you have anybody that wants to be a paramedic or an EMT, tell them that we wanna make sure that they get in that class, because there's work to do. Okay, so this is really when I realized that we needed to all chat as a community is when, when I heard that we were closing the second floor at the hospital. So people heard that inpatient services were going to be evaluated, and our second floor is a med surg floor. That's where we take care of our medical and surgical patients if they stay overnight. It's also where we take care of what we call inpatients or outpatients. Really doesn't matter if you're the patient, you don't, you're, you're in the hospital, your, your head's on a pillow, we're taking care of you. But we do call it the inpatient unit, the acute care unit, the med surg unit, so even staff at the hospital, when they heard inpatient is likely closing, which it's not, there's panic, and that's not what we want. There's gonna be change over these one to three years, but we want everybody to feel informed and supported. That's most important for us, because they know, they need to know they're gonna be able to take care of our patients. We're not closing the second floor. I just like to say second floor now, so it takes all that verbiage out of it. We are looking at what that mix of patients may look like. And we're a fifteen-bed floor right now. Three of those beds are those sicker patient beds with ventilators and things that I talked about. We're, we're talking about, do we keep all three of those beds open for those patients, or do we go all med surg patients, which means we'd be able to still take care of the same number of patients, just the mix of those patients may change. That's gonna be a one to three-year plan. That's something that's gonna take a lot of coordination, a lot of investigation, a lot of conversation and coordination for our patients, so I don't anticipate that to be anything anytime soon. But just know, we're not closing that floor. You're still gonna, if you need to be an inpatient or be in the hospital overnight, we are gonna be able to take care of you. In addition to that, and I'll talk about our new ER group in a minute, but one of the services that they offer is called ED observation, which is something we haven't done in Manistee before. So say you're in the ED and we think you're gonna be able to go home, but you're not really ready to go home, maybe you need more fluids or you need more pain medicine or for whatever your issue is while you're there. Rather than staying in ER bed all night, which lights are on, it's noisy, you know, and nobody else, you may have to wait in the lobby because that bed is being taken. They actually have ED observation coverage, where it's the same ER doc will transfer you to that second floor, and you would be able to stay overnight there in an ED observation status. And then the next day, if you're doing well or you're not doing well, then we'd admit you right from there, and if not, you'd be able to go home. So that's something that's also gonna go to that second floor. There's likely we might need to take care of some more patients on that floor, so there's gonna be plenty of opportunity from our evaluation that makes us know that we're gonna be able to take care of patients. So talking about ER providers, for the last seven years or so, we went with a group called ECS that provided all of our, it was contracted service that provided all of our ER service to our department. They're out of Grand Rapids, and as a system, we recognize, you could probably go to most hospitals and they had a different ER provider group, which, you know, we work really well together, but if you're in the same organization with the same protocols, the same language, you know each other, it's more coordinated care. And so as a system, we are transferring over to SCP. Manistee went live with that November first. Some of our providers stayed, but a lot of them stayed with ECS because they have benefit to do that. They've been with them longer than they have been with us. So we are seeing some new faces, but we're seeing faces from Cadillac and Traverse City, because again, we're all gonna be in that same group. We're all getting to know each other. One thing that was challenging for us in Manistee is we have Meditech as our electronic medical record. We're getting rid of that and next, and I'll come and celebrate with you all, because it's been a long time coming. We're gonna be on Cerner, which means we'll all be on Cerner within the system. So if you have the same ED group and you say, have the same EMR, it just helps with that coordination of care. Everything talks to each other easier unless you're, and we do fine with Meditech, but we've learned to live with it, but we're gonna say goodbye to it in probably September. So we did go live with SCP, doing well, and we do have one doc on during the day and one doc on during the night. Based on our acuity and things, we did have a mid-level or an APP or nurse practitioner that was on eleven A to eleven P. Right now, we don't have that, because based on our volume and our acuities, they, they've done our, the model that we have now with busier ERs than what we have, but we're open and flexible and we're open to if, you know, it's been like week two. As we meet weekly and sometimes daily to talk about it, we're keeping track of admissions and census and acuity and all of that, and that may change, but we're gonna decide that over time. So, like I mentioned, it's important that I'm here today to answer any questions that you have and kind of share. So like I mentioned, it's important that I'm here today to answer any questions that you have and kind of share the updates. These are all the areas that I've talked to so far. I think I'm going to talk to the county public safety meeting December 1st. And I think Jeff Dons just added one on for me um next Tuesday with maybe the county board. I think that's next week on Tuesday. But if you think of any other groups that you think would be helpful, it doesn't have to be this long-winded, it can be shorter. But if you think there are any other groups that would be helpful for me to um meet with and talk about um what this means for our community, please let me know. I'll be happy to meet with them. And I think that's all I have. What questions do you have?
So I have one question, well, two actually. Um, you had mentioned paramedics and EMTs and looking to like increase the number of people in that field. I'm just wondering, like, at the high school level and schools in this area, they do um like a health careers class over at West Shore. Is that a possibility to get people in the schools talking to seniors or juniors um about what that field looks like and what opportunities are out there? Because um, with the way it works in the high schools, um, kids pick what their interest is, but they don't really necessarily get an idea of what's out there. So I'm just wondering, like, um, sometimes you invite people in and talk and I'm just wondering if that might be an opportunity to get some kids.
It's a great, yep. And it's something, it's a great resource and, you know, we want people thinking about healthcare if they're interested at all. Um, with the pandemic, we used to do clinicals and things with nursing. I worked with Shelley at West Shore Community College and we paused on that. We're actually going to do our first nursing uh clinical this winter at the hospital. But we talked about other opportunities with Allied Health. And we're actually looking at, rather than waiting until they're at the college, doing job shadows. And so we're getting ready to implement that. We used to do that and we did pause that with um, with COVID as well. But we really do want to get students in front of that. So we're developing that program now. And hopefully, we were hoping to maybe have it by winter. I don't know if we'll have it by winter, but certainly by next fall. It's important. And in, you know, I went into nursing and I really didn't know much about it. Thank goodness I liked it. But you know, it's really important to get students and we, we've done it. We go see, check on radiology for four hours. Go see what EMT does, go see what a nurse does, see what a respiratory therapist does. So I, I, thank you. It is a really important point to really get folks interested earlier than later.
Um, the other question we had was, if I remember correctly from last year, it seems like housing was a concern with a lot of your employees. Are you finding that that housing is still like the number one obstacle in getting people to come to the hospital for employment? Or is there, what are you seeing, I guess, as the obstacle like that we might be able to help with as a city council?
Thank you. Um, actually, housing right has stabilized a little bit. It was interesting when we went to the career fair at West Shore Community College, the last time they had it, we didn't have any openings. And it was like rare, respiratory therapy was the only one, nursing, no, which I was like, I can't believe you still took information. Said, please come, keep us in mind. Um, I don't, housing right now, so we haven't had a lot of turn. So that's um important. I do think childcare continues to be an issue um that we continue to think about. Because we, I mean, we have people that, we have somebody getting ready to have a baby and she may or may not be able to come back because her childcare has changed. So I think that's probably been the biggest um obstacle for us. And I, it's a handful of people, but that's, that means a lot when you're a small hospital with a small community. And we want people to come back to work if they want to after they have their little one.
So you have one doctor in the, a shift now in the ER?
Say, I'm sorry, say the.
You have one doctor in the ER shift. So how many patients are you able to have if you have one doctor?
Well, the only difference is we didn't have that, that kind of mid-coverage shift. You always had one doctor in the morning and one doctor in the evening. So it's that mid-level. Right now, they're doing really well. There's not really a number because we'll take care of anybody that comes in, but we are tracking that. And I think in ER, what we see is usually the volume goes up a little bit, like late morning into the evening. And so we're looking at that kind of bump and seeing how they do with wait times and things like that. The first couple of days, it was longer, to be honest, just because the EMR, they'd gone through education and training, but it's different when you're seeing patients. We had two very sick patients that first day that we had to fly out. So it was a very intense morning all the way around. We had support available. So I don't have a magic number, but we are open to if we needed to add that um mid-level during that mid-shift, bring that back, that we would do that.
Okay.
Depends on volume and acuity. I think it's both. So we have to look at it.
Has anybody looked into offering your staff childcare, like putting in childcare? I'm just wondering, because you have that building that's across the street from the hospital that's, was just built and now it's for sale. So I'm just.
Yeah. We do. We do absolutely. And I have, I, I can't share a lot of details about it because it's um, it's on the um, it's early development process. But we, we do. I have a beautiful plan that I will be happy to ribbon cut with someday, but I can't do it right now. So, but then you're right, we have opportunity. Um, and that building is sold, but there's other space on campus that we could utilize.
Okay.
But thanks. Great question.
Is there any plan for the OB department? Are you guys using that for anything yet or?
Um, we're not. That's where we went for the ER renovation. We moved up there and we've moved out. Um, it's adjacent to surgery and because surgery is growing, um, we're kind of thinking about what we could do in that space, whether we can make that kind of a um, kind of like for our scopes and things to kind of do that quick in and out, almost like an ASC or a surgery center. I mean, it'd still be part of the hospital. But I think right now we're looking at that probably for something like that down the road potentially. I wouldn't put that in the notes because that's um something we talk about, um, but that's, that's kind of some of our thoughts. We really could use the space and it's right there. So that's something that we think about for future growth.
Okay.
Good question.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we will have a discussion on the ordinance updates. Uh, Mr. Campbell.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. So our ordinance committee, which is comprised of Mayor Jermaine Sullivan, Mayor Proton James Roblesy and Councilman Bachman, met to review a variety of ordinances. A lot of these came from recommendations from department heads, the city attorney's office, some council suggestions throughout the last year and also the DDA. So some of the feedback, this is, I'll use the minutes from our last meeting to guide the discussion. Some things were just very much outdated, but some things, so one of the discussions is downtown. We have the two-hour parking. One of the exemptions is handicap parking, but also we have parklets, which, you know, occupy spaces. There's a process through the DDA that they're approved. I think they, uh, the DDA, this has started during COVID. It does add a lot to the, the ambiance downtown. There's kind of having people out seating. Um, on River Street has been a nice addition is what the DDA feels. So I think to make sure that we don't have conflicts, this is something we could add to approve the parklets. And then also um, there's some language here in D where we'd add that um, it would be exempt from um, you know, the two-hour parking, having parklets there. So this is one of the items that we discussed. Um, another item in parking and city attorney was able to, this is kind of George before Tim. There's kind of an ordinance to modify. One of the other items was this penalty. Um, it's not constitutional to imprison someone for not paying a fine. So this is kind of an outdated language that should be, should be taken out at this point. So looking at taking out that language, putting in, you know, the scheduled fees and the uh, and so that's the update there.
Can we back up to the, the parklet things?
Yes.
Um, I for some reason don't have my notes with me, but I think that we were going to add something in there that um, because we already have established businesses that have parklets, the ones that don't have, they just can't put one up. They've got to be approved by the.
Yeah, there's a, there's a process. Yep. So they'd have to get approval.
Okay.
Through the DDA, correct. Okay. The next one discussion is animals downtown. So there's um, one of the items we discussed was um, the feeding of animals and um, bird feeders downtown. The DDA discussed this last Wednesday and one of the topics was, you know, we have this statement and here we had wild mammals. I was talking with the city attorney and also I think having it as animals and just not allowing open feeding. We have a statement here about in general, bird feeders being four feet above the ground. But the statement is that it wouldn't be, and then we'd add this highlighted language that it wouldn't be permitted in the downtown district. So um, I think in general, open feeding, it sounds like, our discussion was water bowls were okay, but open feeding in general was just not a good thing to have downtown. So, I don't know, does anyone have any concerns about that, questions? So another discussion item was the blight ordinance. I think with our ordinance committee, we talked about, you know, rec, you know, we have nuisance abatement. We have some remedies in our, our um ordinance that talk about placing things on the tax rule. I think um, this is still in progress a little bit. Tim's been looking into some, some different state statutes and. I'll talk about that a little bit.
Yeah. I, I think I could talk about it really quick. Just uh, generally speaking, there's multiple statutes that allow a city to place a lien on property. A subset of those statutes allow the city to further collect the lien as taxes. But one of the funny things is that they're not uniform between them. And so there's a lot of different processes. When we're talking about blight in particular, there's uh, sort of two approaches to blight. There's the procedure for uh demoing a dangerous structure. Uh, that allows placement of a lien on the property and that lien doesn't have much priority over other liens, but it can cover properties throughout the state owned by the same person. The problem is oftentimes that property might be owned by someone who's not even alive anymore. It might not own any, any other property and a lien is only as good as the uh, sort of the equity in the property that you can get out of it if the property is sold. And then as far as the procedure for uh nuisance actions, that's a little different. You can get a lien for a nuisance uh, for a, excuse me, a municipal civil infraction violation. Uh, you can get a lien out of those similar to the structure. It's, it's just a lien on the property and there are some ways to get those collected as taxes. And I've been kind of reviewing the procedure that's in there. I'd say not quite ready for primetime on that, but uh, we'll be getting back and I'll be working with the city staff to uh sort of make sure that whatever is in these ordinances is uh, is as best as it can be to get the city their money.
Um, I have a question. For the nuisances and the blight, could we split that up in, because blight, the way that the ordinance reads, it's kind of, we can't put a lien on the taxes for structural. So, but nuisance is like garbage and stuff in your yard. So if we split that and had like a subsection, so the nuisances, that can go on a tax lien, but this blight structure can't. See what, do you see what I mean?
Yeah, I can take a look into that. Yeah.
Okay.
So another one we talked about is um, having a quicker turnaround time with the noxious weeds. So talking, we talked with the ordinance committee about it. Um, right now, Councilmember Bachman, you were asking about the current process. Uh, the DPW responds to these based, it's complaint based now. They used to do kind of different runs around the city looking for it. Now it is complaint based. So they'll get a C click fix now or a call or if someone sends them something about it, they'll go check it out, send the notice and then they come to, to, to cut it and then bill the property owner after a certain amount of time. Talking with uh, city attorney, I think he was looking at a couple of different options we could use. So we really have two things here. We have, you know, the length of the, of the noxious weed grass. And then we also have the notice that we provide. So could we shorten, you know, a lesser, you know, height? Or could we also shorten the notice? One thing that um, Tim found was that, so state statute says that you provide a 10-day notice. But he's found that Traverse City, for example, does a notice at the beginning of the year that covers, you know, basically that season. So the notice has been given. If it's found, then um, DPW could act to cut it. And I'll let you explain a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I, I was interested in that procedure and I just wrote an email to Lauren Tribblelock, the attorney for Traverse City. Again, just out of curiosity, I don't know that that's the approach that the city would want to take, but I think it would. If there's a concern that there's too long of a wait time between identifying the grass being too long or the weeds being too long and then being able to cut them, uh, the procedure that they're using, assuming they're not having any problems with it, if the city wanted to adopt it, it would allow uh, sort of rectifying the situation faster when it's seen because the, everybody in the whole city had noticed upon publication. But I want to talk with them and just kind of get an idea how that's worked out for them.
I have a question on that. So the written notice part, I mean, I understand needing to give notice in writing, but is there a way to maybe change that process, I guess? Like, is there a way to make a phone call? Like, that might be quicker if you make a phone call. Cause I've heard some people say, like, I got a letter, but it wasn't my property, it's my neighbor's. Do you know what I mean? So like if there was a way to identify it using the tax rule and make a phone call, we might be able to speed up that process as well.
It could, could be, yeah. Well, I, I think one of the benefits of the procedure I was talking about there is it wouldn't even require a letter or a phone call because it would be, it would have been published in the newspaper in March. So uh, so it would possibly cut out that first contact. It could just allow DPW to go in and cut the grass. But again, uh, I'm not sure what the city or your constituents would think of that procedure. And it could be a bit of a, uh, could be some growing pains having a, a new procedure like that, which I guess you can build in, you know. You can build in guardrails for that.
Property and cut the grass when it's over inches. We don't need a court order. We don't need any document. We can just say, we declare it that way and we can cut your yard. I mean.
That's why I want to know how it's working out in Traverse City. That's exactly my, my thought as well. Yeah.
If we do that now, do we take a picture, like a before and after? I guess I'm just wondering if there's a dispute? How does that work if like, if they're like, that wasn't my property?
I would want, yeah, I would want a ruler showing a picture of the grass and that would go in the file.
When we send out notices, do we do certified mail?
I'd have to check with the, with DPW about that, but I believe so.
I don't know if we do.
Certified mail. I can check.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Cause they could say that they never received the notice too.
Yeah. I guess my other question on that like is, in my opinion, I mean, it's an issue. Don't get me wrong. I'm not saying that. But I guess I view it as a difference, like, let's say we have an elderly person who ends up in the hospital and their line went for two weeks and that was the least of the family's worry. Like a phone call or, you know, something might make sense in that case versus you have somebody who is the repeat offender, who it's always an issue. Like, is there a way to account for that?
And I, and I think if we do have the phone number, if we do have something, I think that would be ideal to do that. It's just.
Phone calls are nice, but they're not definitely legally binding because you don't know who's on the other end of that phone call. Someone can say hello and you can talk to them.
Yeah. Well, I'm saying like still send it in writing, but I think like in some cases, the phone call might.
It speeds it up, but a phone call doesn't replace the, because you don't know who you're talking to. You don't know, they don't know who they're talking to and there's no, you're not going to go to court and say, hey, I called.
Everybody has a cell phone. How are you getting these numbers?
You know.
And they could say they didn't get the call.
Courtesy thing if it works, basically. That's all it is. Yeah.
I guess where a lot of this came from is so 31 corridor or some, you know, it's before the 4th of July. We're noticing a six-foot weed coming up on, off the sidewalk on private property. It looks pretty bad. But we have to wait till it gets eight inches, then we have to send a seven-day notice. And so we almost have to get in, in front of it three, two to three.
Are those businesses right there on First and 31 going? So.
So that's kind of where this, a lot of this came from.
Then would you be checking with the attorney or with the judge to get him on board with this? I've heard different things with the blight ordinance. And Tom, the last judge, didn't really look very good at it and, and I don't know how the new judge is going to react to it.
Sometimes it's tough to ask the judge outside of a specific case, but I, you definitely get a, get a sense for it.
General idea.
Yeah, you get an idea when you take one, when you take one to them and find out what they do, that's for sure. Uh, and I'll say, I, I've worked with Jared a little bit already since being here. I think Jared's excellent, learned uh fellow. Uh, don't know how he feels about, about blight yet, but uh.
I've heard different rumors though. I was just wondering.
So, I think one thing we could look at is making the weed length a little bit shorter, so maybe doing eight inches. And then also, if we did this publish ahead, if we published this ahead of time and said that now we're going to give four-day notice, at least we're kind of shortening up that time window. So, I guess if council's okay with that, maybe we'll go in that direction, assuming city attorney finds that's legal and appropriate.
It'll, we'll be looking at this one a little more, yeah.
Any other comments on that one? So, the next one, city clerk Heather Taffley noticed that our business registration, it stated anyone operating or doing business in the city should have a business registration. I think with now with people doing, with the gig economy, people doing a lot more out of their, you know, homes and doing multiple jobs, it really didn't age well. So, the thought was that we'd need a business where there's a physical location in the city, and really we're trying to make sure that that passes fire code and things like that, and it's safer occupancy. So, we took out, the ordinance committee looked at this, and there was a statement of a permanent physical location. We thought there was an issue, there could be issues with a permanent physical location, so we took out the word permanent. And so I thought this one was kind of a simpler one. Did anyone have any issues with this? Questions? No. Okay. And one of the bigger topics, and we actually talked about this a bit last year, we have some conflicting language in our ordinances regarding, we have a section sidewalks and a River Walk, and then we have safety, sanitation, and health. And in one section we have, and it actually doesn't even mesh with our current practice of we remove snow from the sidewalks in the central business district mainly because I've heard stories about the businesses in our ordinance are responsible for putting it out into the street, but we don't, we don't necessarily want that. I think we want to get that, all that snow out of the downtown area, just for operational sake. It just, it doesn't make sense to have snow piled up between the cars and then have people try to park their cars over snow that's been pushed into the street on the sidewalk.
But Bill, don't you take and have a, no parking on River Street, three to seven?
I'm sorry?
Don't you have no parking on River Street, three to seven?
Three to 7:00 AM? So, that's kind of the reason for that. So, they do, yeah, and ideally they'd be done with it by that time. So, I guess we could leave that in there. This is why we're talking about it. So, right now we have, and so Tim was putting in, kind of, we looked at, the ordinance committee asked to combine some of these, or at least separate, you know, sidewalks and some of that discussion. So, I don't know, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Oh, yeah. I guess this was just sort of an initial pass of taking the items out of 674 and trying to sort of fit them into 1024 so that we could get an idea of what it looked like if we were really just addressing all of the sidewalk items in one, in one section. And then I guess we, Bill and I, looking at this, had some questions about, like you were saying, the central business district there. That provision doesn't seem to mesh with what the city's doing right now. So, I think further, further work needs to be done on that, for sure. But the idea ultimately is to have all of the provisions for the sidewalk, for the sidewalks under, under chapter 1024.
So, we had some discussion about the maintenance of the sidewalk, being the property owner's responsibility to keep it free of snow and ice. We had some discussion, the ordinance committee, about maybe triggering that after a larger snowfall of four inches. The simpler way would just say that the city would, that residents or the property owners keep their sidewalk clear of snow and ice.
Okay, so then I think I brought this up to you during the meeting, Bill. Who's going to do my sidewalk? Because that goes all the way from US 31 to way up to the high school. And a plow, one plow comes and throws it on, the other one takes it off, then they come and throw it back on again. And it's heavy, and I'm not going to shovel it, I'll tell you that right now.
Yeah, there's definitely some stretches that are, yeah, who's going to do that?
I mean, you know, somebody suggested, the senior senators said, have one guy, but they only got one guy to help the elderly, and he can't do the whole city.
And I think when we had this, this discussion last time, it was, you know, and then it's going to be an increased burden on the police department, whomever's going to respond to complaints about sidewalks not being cleared. And then is the remedy that, you know, the city does it? And, you know, it's not, I don't know if that's a good use of our employees' time to do that. It's just, it'd be quite a burden.
Well, last year, somebody came before council, and was it this ordinance, or was it something else that said the city would do sidewalks in front of people's homes?
So, the practice right now is that when they're done doing the different, you know, the downtown, the parking lots, the major streets, the school routes, then they'll have this little cabota that does around the schools and then can do some streets here and there. But it's not practical, or we're not able to do all the sidewalks. So, it's just, I think that's kind of just being realistic. It's, it would probably be better to put the burden on the homeowner, because the expectation of the city to do all the sidewalks, it's just not feasible.
Are we going to have the schools do their own, too?
I think we have, we have at the expansive commercial areas, they have to do their sidewalks. Let's see. So, yeah, I would think the schools would do theirs.
The schools do theirs.
I'm sorry?
The schools do their own.
On their property, yeah.
Yeah.
The sidewalks do.
There's been times when we've gone around Jefferson or some other, some other schools, but...
So, on 12th Street, from Jim's House to 31, that's Manistee Catholic, right? So, they would be responsible for that. So, they would get a notice saying, hey, you've got to shovel that on the side. Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's, yes. So, still some, it sounds like still some work to do on that one. Any comments on it? Any more discussion on that?
Well, I guess, I'm personally not in favor of that change. I think that if that's been the past practice, we should continue that, or we should put it as a work session item and allow the public to weigh in on that. You have a lot of people that are elderly. You have people that go to work at different times. I agree with Mr. Robowski. I mean, the last thing you want to do is go shovel and then have them come by and throw it all up, and then have to shovel it again. I mean, how many times are you responsible to shovel? Like, if I shovel once, do I take a picture? And then if somebody complains, say, here's when it's time and date stamped? I mean, that's going to be an issue for a lot of people, I think.
And generally, when the plow throws that snow up, it's much heavier, too. And, yeah, it's a burden.
But then you're going to have people complain that the city didn't get to their street. So, you're going to have it, you can't have it both ways. I mean, they can't do the whole entire city, every sidewalk.
I've argued against this ordinance and stuff. They always did it. Fifty years now, I've been there, and it's always been done.
The other item is sidewalk replacement. So, there was a discussion about addressing sidewalks throughout the city. So, just for, just for council's not, we've spent $17,600 last year on sidewalks. This year, we budgeted $36,000 for sidewalks. DPW director Jeff McCula explained his current process of, starting on the north side, now he's kind of in the south side, west of 31, working through that neighborhood of the, doing saw cutting and then replacing some of the more damaged ones, and then going to do a circle of the city. But he might spend a couple of years in this section before getting to east of 31. Something that council could consider is kind of having a policy to do overall sidewalk inspections in different areas, and then doing a 50-50 split with the homeowners. That's kind of splitting the burden. Another thing that the ordinance committee discussed was the potential of addressing sidewalks also during the sale of a property, having an inspection done, and then anything that's a trip hazard would need to be addressed before the transfer of the property. So, there's some language in Luddington that does this. So, I just wanted to open that up for council discussion.
I think the Ritz has pushed these sidewalks up over the last hundred years. I can't lift a damn sidewalk off. Maybe I can get Spicer down.
And so, our current ordinance does put the burden on the property owner, but I think doing something like a 50-50 split where the city pays half might be more palatable for the residents.
Bill, what would a normal replacement of sidewalk cost? What are the sections?
It's about 500 a flag. What would you say it's a, that's a good, four to 500 a flag a sidewalk?
That's what it'd be good to have their group meet with the public and see if they're satisfied with that.
And who would do that? Would that be the DPW, or would we be contracting that work out like we do now?
I would think we'd get bids, depending on the amount of work. I think we would probably bundle it.
So, I guess what I'm saying, like, with that type of a model, if I was one property owner and I wanted my sidewalk replaced, I might have to wait until there's a group of people. It might not just be done when that individual homeowner has it done, because you're not going to call out a company for one piece of sidewalk, right?
Well, I would think if...
If we're paying half, potentially?
Well, if we're, we probably have a cutoff date for, you know, I think if there's interested homeowners and we go to this 50-50 policy, you could sign up as long as it's in the bid package for quantities. I think it would, could be included. So, there's some interest on this one. Okay, so we'll explore that one a little bit more. So, another one for discussion was back in the last streetscape. They, the council at the time requested that there be conditions met. They didn't want, and I think this, Councilman Bachman explained that there was, I think, the city engineer took the lead on this quite a bit, and he had some, just no angled parking, didn't want bump outs, wasn't interested in Pine Street, or River Street closed between Pine Street and Spruce Street, where they wanted the planting. And actually, this is one we haven't, they didn't want any planting along the street, shall be kept back near the building line and not placed out near the curb line. Now we have those planted. The DDA had them placed out by the street. One thing we're looking, the, the DDA men discussed this last Wednesday, they'd like to get rid of this ordinance. So, I think just to, I mean, having, you know, an ordinance from 20 years ago dictate how it's done this time, they were asking that council consider getting rid of this.
Didn't we discuss, we wanted the downtown to recognize that this was not prohibiting them from doing something different, that they brought something to us that was different than this, we could then amend this, right?
Yes.
We don't want the DDA to think that because this ordinance is there, they can't even envision a way of doing the street that way, correct?
Correct.
And until they brought us a package that said we want to do something different than this, it really didn't lend itself to a lot of, a lot of changes. Kind of how I thought we left that, right?
So, I think they are looking at, at least some of those, I think B and C is something they're looking into. So, they did vote to recommend this ordinance be removed. So, I just wanted to let council be aware of that. Another item, so the utilities, this was, so in our ordinance, it says we shall shut off someone if they're delinquent in their water bill. So, water bills automatically go to the county if they're delinquent, and the city gets paid, and I think there's a fee that goes on there. We're looking at, there was a recommendation from finance and the, and DPW to have this put to May, just because we have some people that frequently, you know, insist we turn off the water. There's an altercation. It's very time-consuming. But then there's also been some, just some safety concerns with some residents, and I think ultimately we do get made whole, and it gets put on the taxes. So, we want the flexibility when it's something where it's just becoming a safety concern and an undue burden to continue to spend time when there's some people who continue to make sure we come out every month, or every couple of months to shut them off and then turn them back on.
Bill, isn't there a bill or ordinance, can't turn off if the people are indigenter? I thought there was something.
There, yeah, there were some COVID laws, I mean, there were some things about that. So, this was also to make sure that we don't conflict with some of that as well.
So, would that be a change from our past practice, or like, right now, it's not always that we turn off after 15 days? I guess I'm just thinking, like, if we change this, are we going to have to spell it out differently in procedures? Like, so one person doesn't complain that theirs was turned off, and somebody else complains that theirs wasn't? Like, do you know what I mean? So, it's...
I think this is to go along with what...
I don't know.
So, you're thinking about a timeline for that, or at least...
No, I think this is to go along with what we're currently doing.
Yeah.
Because right now, we're not always shutting off.
Like, maybe shut off depending on circumstances. Like, I mean, do you put a clause in there? I guess is what I'm saying. Like, how do you get one property owner who might want, call and say, come turn it off, and you turn it off, or, you know, whatever, and then the next one, there's a situation, it shouldn't have been turned off?
I think we could look at language at the discretion of either the city manager or DPW director.
Were there any laws, we talked about this, the Flint water crisis, are there any laws that said we can't turn somebody's water off under certain circumstances? I thought there was at a time. I want to make sure that we don't violate that law, because if there's somebody out there with six kids in the house, they can't pay their water bill, we decided going to turn it off, and six kids got no water, I think that's not good on our part. We have to make sure that what we're doing is legally sound and morally right, I guess would be the right way to put that.
Well, or can we put a dollar amount to it? I mean, would that be easier? I mean, in some ways, I agree with Councilmember Bachman. I mean, like, I know, for instance, people can't have their heat turned off and different things if there's kids in the home.
There are, there are...
There are laws out there, yeah, that you have to regulate. But I guess, like, everybody's water bill is different. So, like, if somebody's behind and they owe $100, is it worth the time and effort to send somebody out to turn off their water bill for, or turn off their water for $100? Where if somebody owes $3,000 in backwater bills, that's a little different. So, like, where does that come in?
That's a good point.
But if we have an escrow deposit, that amount is a certain amount, and if they go over that, then that becomes a burden on the city. Because if that bill goes over that, we've got an agreement that states anything above that escrow deposit, that the city is responsible. We cannot go back on the property owner for that.
Okay.
So, that is, anything above that amount, then the city has to collect, and if we can't collect that, then that ends up being something that the city ends up...
Government things that could impact the most vulnerable population negatively, and there's a lot of communities that don't let that happen, and I want to make sure we're in that list, because, at least from my point of view.
Yeah.
Can't be added to, like, the taxes.
You can if there's an escrow deposit, no. That's a, it's kind of like an insurance policy for the landlord. They can put that deposit down, and then that deposit is used to pay any outstanding water at the time that that tenant leaves. If the tenant leaves some, a bill that's above that escrow amount, we apply that deposit to the bill, and anything above that, it's the city's responsibility to col, responsibility to collect. We cannot go back on the homeowner for that. If there's no deposit, the bill remains in the homeowner's name, and yes, we can collect anything by putting it on the taxes. But...
Is there a number of how many people's water have been shut off in the last year?
I don't know that number, but I know it's...
Yeah, we can get that for you. I know when we met about this months ago, I had that, but I don't have that with me. So, this was going to give us flexibility, but we can look into the, yeah, some of the laws about shut offs. This was to give us, yeah. I think the landlord-tenant situation, that's a different situation as well. But this was, I mean, I don't think we want to keep the, that last sentence about, hey, we won't turn it back on till all the delinquent reconnected, the charge is paid in full. We want to be able to have a payment plan possibly for people. So, there's definitely some updating we should do to this, and we can... So there's definitely some updating we should do to this and we can maybe add some more guidelines. And maybe this is in conjunction with some guidelines. And then we, they also asked Housing North and discuss some, a possible short-term rental policy. I think this has come up a couple of times at council. Tracy recommended the one over Frankfurt, passed one recently. It's a couple of things here. We, our discussion at the ordinance committee was potentially having there be a cap of thirty within the residential neighborhoods. Maybe downtown, we talked about Harbor Village before, us not having restrictions. But this would, I was just going to talk about a little bit, this, a lot of these, we updated with our ordinances and they have this good neighbor guide where it really, you know, depending on if they follow these protocols. You know, if there's certain things that, at a residence that are going wrong, they have, I think, three strikes before, you know, there's some fines and fees. So it's almost make sure that they're integrating. I think we talked about potentially adding about our alternate parking on something like this. If we were to have, you know, a policy like this, let them know how, you know, some of our, our ordinances work. This was the fee schedule. It would be like a three-year registration. One thing we talked about is if we were to implement maybe existing would be grandfathered in. But any, when they re-registered or when property changed hands, they would no longer be entitled to necessarily have the short-term rental. So these are some of the things we discussed. I don't know Tracy if you wanted to add anything about this, but.
So did council receive, like the seasonal population study and some of that information as well that I provided?
I sent that out earlier.
Okay.
They probably need to refer, and I'll send this to council too to look over. This is a lot to digest.
Yeah, so the memo I think that I shared with Bill was pretty extensive in terms of, and I'm happy to get other city short-term rental ordinances if you're interested in others. I just really thought that we were similar and close to Frankfurt. I know that you already had Luddington's information a couple of years ago. But I could more than easily get others as well. But I do think that it's probably important to note, and I think Bill said about carving out locations. For example, that, you know, you really, you don't necessarily have the cap on, which might be somewhere like Harbor Village or the downtown district as carve-outs. And that you don't necessarily have to pick a number. You could pick a percentage, especially since your housing supply is going to be changing. So that's something a lot of people do is a percent versus a number. And the only other thing I thought was important to have a base on what you actually have for short-term rentals. So whatever system I had shared, a name of a company that a lot of people in Northern Michigan use, Granicus. I do know there's other things out there. Bill had mentioned maybe working with Manistee Tourism because they do have a system that they're counting short-term rentals also. But getting that number to know what you have would be also imperative, I think, in establishing your baseline and then what you want to move forward.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, and I can get tons of other information. If you're looking for something specific, let me know and you'll be able to, to get that for you.
How many short-term rentals do we have right now? Because I know some closed up.
I, I really don't know. I mean, you can go on Granicus and you can do a little test of your area. So I could do that to get for our zip code. That is free of charge to do that little sort of demo test. So we could do that, but I don't know. If you have a sensible-
I think I'll, I'll reach out to Sammy and see if she can get us an updated number.
Yeah.
It's gonna be hard to really qualify or figure out who is because if they don't register and they just want to do it in their own way, that we wouldn't know those people.
Well, one thing that we talked about was grandfathering in all the ones that are inspected and have a certificate. And then if they don't, if they, like from the cutoff date, so like if the cutoff date is today because we're talking about it, we don't want people to, you know, run out and get certified. Then if you don't and you're caught with a rental, then there's a fine.
And most people are doing a pretty stiff fine to have the incentive for people to register. And the stiff, there's the, the fine and then in addition to that, you have to get that short-term rental registration at that same time. And some places are, once you, I know that Frankfurt's had a one, two, and three year. If you meet certain criteria, then you can skip two, three years or skip every other year. So that your registration, it's an annual registration. It's a two-year or a three-year. So it's just depends on different levels and how complicated you want that system to be.
We also talked about limiting the number to thirty and then like the ones that are grandfathered in when they go to sell, they lose that, that certificate or whatever and they have to be in that pool of thirty. So if there's thirty already, they don't get to be a rental anymore. So.
So I guess I have a question on that. Like so would that just be the grandfathered in ones? Or like if I went through and did it and I was one of the thirty, could that transfer to the new owner if you sold that property? Because like right now, if you have a long-term rental that's inspected and you have a year left on that certificate, doesn't that potentially transfer to the new owner if they want to continue to use it as a rental?
I was not a part of that discussion necessarily. That is an alternative that you could do. I think if you're going to do something like that, you know, your, your carve-outs would be important to consider also.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking that my, somebody might do that as a penalty even if they've followed all the rules and procedures. Do you know what I mean?
Right.
I mean, the new owner might chose that they don't want to do it. I, I think that there should be a discussion and there should be some type of like acknowledgement, like I'm going to use this or I'm not going to use it. And if they choose not to use it, then I think it's done, you know? But I don't know how that would, I could see that being a conflict when people say long-term rental can transfer, but short-term can't. I, I just think that might need to be a little bit more careful.
I could maybe find if anybody has any type of precedent where they're, they're doing something like that when it comes time for sale and, and what that-
Okay.
If that impacts things. So let me.
I like the carved-out areas that you're talking about here. I think the central business downtown, I think is a great place for short-term rentals and the condos. That's one, I think that's another great place.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about it, there's probably between that thirty.
Yeah.
I mean, already right there, more than.
I still think that we need to include waterfront in that with the downtown and that condos. Because Dunes Drive, Harbor Drive, houses on First Street are not going to be long-term rentals like they can. Dunes Drive is never going to be a long-term rental for somebody that's, if they're paying forty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. So I think that that needs to be included in the.
I mean, that would sound logical. Dunes Drive is a prime area. Yeah. I was thinking Harbor Village and Dunes Drive.
Well, and like Harbor Village and even Lighthouse Landings, they have, you know, those condos have their own rules as far as rentals, like what you kind of can't do. So I think they're, they have kind of a grip on that. You know what I mean? For the most-
I thought a couple of years ago, we had talked about having the associations make their own rules for-
They do have their own.
Yeah.
Part of the thirty or whatever.
That's why I think we should just let them do what they plan, but.
I, I think it's working. I haven't heard anybody complain about any rentals in the associations for the condos.
I don't think, from what I'm hearing, it's not those locations that I think that are-
Residential.
It's for people. Well, if the discussion, anything else that's needed, again, I'm happy to provide that and we'll get that to you. Thank you.
Thanks Tracy. In six seventy-four, we discussed as part of combining the safety, sanitation, and health. There's some obsolete language in there regarding allowing firewood in the right-of-way for a period of time, which I think is probably back from the lumber barons who were helping write the ordinances. So there's just, there's just some older language, which during the combination, I think we'll probably look at taking out. So just to recap, I think we have the parking generally, it sounded like we're good to go on those corrections. The animals, I think we're, in general, the council was agreeable on that. And then the business registration change. So these other ones, I think utilities, we'll get a little more information on that. Short-term rental, we'll probably do another, we'll do a study session on that as well. And then the weeds and, and these other ones. So I think we have three that'll come back quickly and then the other ones will schedule, we'll get some more research done and, and bring it back for another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So I made a mistake and, and read the wrong agenda. So I'm going to give Mr. Skiera a few minutes just because he sat here for over two hours, so.
My question concerns our old friend Safe Belt. Are they, are they actually gone now?
Yes.
Totally? And is it my understanding that you hired a city building and rental inspector? Is that official?
So we can have a discussion offline, but I mean, if you want to make some comments, you can.
Yep, just make a comment and then we'll get your questions answered.
Okay, who, then the question, the next question, who do I talk to? If we're, if I'm going to have a meeting with you, Bill?
You can talk to me, yep.
I'll, I'll schedule an appointment. And other than that, you need to improve the acoustics in this place for old people like me. I can't hear hardly a thing that goes on, especially with the female voice being, because this is what my audiologist told me, the female voice is much softer. And so therefore, even, even as some of the males are speaking back and forth when you're sitting here, you can't hear.
It's tough up here too.
I doubt that I'm alone in this.
It's tough up here too.
And maybe we could put some cork board or something or carpeting on the walls or something. But certainly it could be improved.
Thank you.
I hear a lot of people telling me the same thing too, that the DDA is very soft too and they go on the TV, different committees.
It is, it really is.
You have to lean into your microphone.
You gotta lean into the mic.
You gotta talk right into it, otherwise you can't hear.
Yeah, you gotta get in the mic.
They might improve the, you know, the numbers in the audience.
There you go.
To hear what's going on.
Wes said we also get boom mics. Then we could hear Erin when she talks down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gamble, do you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Anybody else have to wrap?
Um, I had a couple of things. Councilmember Paniek had brought up the building inspector at the last council meeting. And we had a community member, I guess I'm just wondering, can we have him come before us and do like an introduction and kind of talk about like what his goals are or his vision? A lot of people in the community are really not understanding we've hired somebody or not understanding the process. And I know Mr. Bradford said, well, there was a plan to put something out with the winter tax bill. But I feel like, I, I'd like him to come and introduce himself and, you know, kind of go over what his goals and vision is so that the public can hear that and get a little bit more information if possible. I'm really continually concerned about the teen center or the wreck at Sands Park. The furnace conversation was almost as clear as mud to me. It seems like we'd get three estimates and get somebody in there and get a furnace. If you go there, somebody from city staff has put a note on the door. I don't really think that note is probably the most appropriate to display to the public. So I'm a little concerned about that and we're asking them to use four portable heaters that can't be turned off. That doesn't necessarily seem like the safest method. So I did mention that at the last council meeting. So it just seems like we got to get something going with that. Citizens are really happy about the Leafs this year, so thank you to the DPW. They've been out. And I know Jeff had mentioned, and then it was mentioned tonight, we have a contract with Custom. Is there a way we can get a list or like do we annually update those? Like I've had people ask about like, for example, how do we choose who the realtor is for the city of Manistee and that? You know, since I've been on council, we have not voted on those things. Are those voted on annually? Are those things that the city manager makes that decision? As a council, we're kind of kept in the dark on that. So if we could maybe get a list of who provides those services to the city. I wanted to support what council member Mayor Protem Grabowski said about like the pickleball courts. I've talked to many people in that area. They're happy with the tennis, well, not the condition of the tennis courts, but they're happy with tennis courts being there or pickleball courts. I feel like if we're going to take those away, we have to have a plan. And I'd like to see that work session and maybe us team up with the parks. And with that, you know, Morton's Park, I think was successful. There was a lot of collaboration, which was great. But I've had several groups or in businesses in the community reach out and say, you know, we didn't know you guys were doing something there. We would have liked the opportunity to potentially bid on that. We would have been more than willing to donate some supplies and materials. I'm just wondering if there's a way that when something like that's going on, if we can reach out to some of those businesses in the local community and see if we can tap into some of those resources. I mean, one gentleman said, even if I didn't get the bid, I would have been more than willing to send some workers and maybe donate some of the weed material and that to put down underneath the mall. She's like, I would have definitely donated something to the community.
So when you say the bid, which bid are you talking about?
I don't think that went out for a bid because we worked with that particular company that does playground equipment.
Yeah.
But they said, I didn't see a bid on that. So, but that's not the first time we've heard from a contractor. There's been a short timeline, it seems like. And I don't know if some of it-
So there wasn't a bid for labor? I guess, are you wondering about the bid for equipment?
Well, that's, I think that's what they brought up, you know, with the equipment. And I get that there's a my deal, so they don't necessarily understand that. You know, but I'm saying like, if we're doing projects like that, there are some local companies that are like, I've been more than willing to donate some time or I would have given some materials if there could have been a way to save the city some costs. So I think when that comes to communication, I know we do a lot with the technology, but I don't know that we're using the paper as much as we could. And there's a lot of people that still don't do social media and they're, they're not seeing it in the paper. So that's all I had.
Mr. Grabowski.
Yeah. Josh, have you had any complaints? I was downtown at one opening of one of the stores and the people were telling me about people coming out of the bathrooms that are supposed to be locked at night. And just as we were talking, a guy come out with a blanket around him. I mean-
We, we, our officers check those at night as much as they can. I think the issue is when, just getting equipment fixed so the locking mechanism works. So we communicate with the DPW and make sure that we get those things fixed in a timely manner. And again, our officers check them as, as frequently as we can.
Okay, because the guy came out and was staring at the store owner as loud as that and laughing.
Yeah, I, I have no doubt that during the day, they go back in there. And, and so the real challenge with homelessness is when they went to a regionalization model and they regionalized homelessness, so have really tied our hands with what resources we have for, I guess you would call it long-term twenty-four hour homelessness. So we continue to, to identify resources. It doesn't do any good to kick somebody down the road, you know, shoot them out of the bathroom. So we, we continue to check those. We continue to, you know, communicate with DPW, make sure equipment gets fixed and try to find solutions for our homeless population.
Is that thing broken again?
It was broken. It was broken as of two weeks ago.
Do you know if a lock was ordered?
Say again?
Do you know if a lock was ordered?
I don't know that answer, yeah.
Thanks. The other thing I wanted to just say, thanks to all the people that voted for me, Jesus, they must like me or something, I don't know. They voted for me, had the highest number, thanks, me and Wes though. And your man.
Mr. Pontiac. Mr. Bachmann.
Mr. Gamble, I just have, I'm curious about the water treatment, did, did Rick Moore retire and if so, did we implement a succession plan and who got change around and what their, you can give me an email back and I don't need it tonight, and who's got what licenses and how we're filling that back though, I'd just like to know.
So there is, yeah, I guess the brief statement is yes, Rick Moore did retire. I think there's the small, urban, anyway, there's, there's, we have a, Jeff has a group that's going to certify, they're doing the check on the water treatment plant, we are looking at fulfilling that in-house, getting the training necessary for Bruce Banks to take over that, it is going to take a couple of years, we're probably going to need, there's an agency that will kind of oversee the wastewater treatment plant in terms of like signing off, doing the checks on, on the facility that are needed and then I think eventually we may have to, we're going to have to do an RFP to kind of bridge the gap before Bruce takes over in that.
People want to retire too, we should know they retired and say thank you and not just have to disappear from the letterhead.
I agree.
Mr. Smith.
Just want to thank the community for the support and as soon as I figure out what I'm doing, I cannot wait to get started.
Up to your next election.
A little bit drink. Fire hose, I won't, I won't deny it, but thank you and I appreciate the, the help from the council for sure.
Mr. Smith.
I don't have anything.
I will take a motion to adjourn.